Sure, second.
Okay, okay, on favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Yeah, we're good.
All right, so I think the first thing, I think we have a joint committee meeting scheduled for July twenty eighth. Does that sound right to the ordinance folks?
That does sound right. Let me just double check it though. I think that is right.
All right, so in the event anything goes haywire, we'll continue anything, any discussion from tonight to that twenty eighth meeting. Just members of the public, if anybody's, you know, the millions of people watching at home. So, I, I did watch the video from the last meeting. I was devastated not to participate in person, but very interesting topics. So I, I think we sort of left it off where people were going to come back and sort of share their thoughts about this. Somebody want to kick it off? Or how do we want to get this ball rolling?
If, if I could try one thing, which there was a question about, you know, the scope of what the amendment is and, and the authority to, to consider different elements. And so I do, I do want to, maybe that's a useful place to start to just clarify that. I did have a conversation with the city attorney. And I, and I think he's fine. He's fine with the scope of, you know, the ability for this group and the city council to consider different elements. And so in, in hearing the discussion at the last meeting, there was something that maybe I did not do the best job of being clear about, which is we talked a little bit about this, this one page kind of word document that kind of started the conversation. And it, it had the current section of the ordinance and it just had like a lined out, you know, lined up something out and then it had option number two, option number three. What, what I think is important just to clarify is that what we, you know, the statute, you know, the, the general laws say that we have to put a legal ad in the newspaper when there is a zoning amendment being discussed. And so the, the thing that I wanted to clarify is that the legal ad was very broad and it was different than that, that word document. So basically the legal ad says, you know, that this group and ultimately city council is going to be asked to, you know, amend section ten point ten to allow cultivation, manufacturing and product, product production of cannabis in new buildings in the highway business. So it is a broad overview of the topics that would be discussed, like that's the topic. And the idea, the case law basically says that, you know, is that sufficient to put, put people on notice? For people to be aware that this is going to be discussed and kind of anything that's remotely connected to that is within that, within that realm. So I just wanted to clarify that you do have the authority to talk about design standards, setbacks, height, you know, those types of things. And I just want to make sure that that's clear. Where, where the discussions are to leave off is kind of like, what should be considered, you know, for cannabis cultivation in the highway business and, and how do you move forward? But I just wanted to make sure that everyone feels comfortable that in looking at whether or not to allow cultivation in new buildings and highway business, you have the, you have the ability to talk about anything that's related. Or anything that you determine is related. And that's kind of where we maybe start a discussion about what is related or what might be necessary to regulate the use. But you do have the authority. So I just want to make sure that everyone feels comfortable with that. Because that was kind of a unclear area during the last meeting.
Yeah, I think Tom, at the end of that hearing last time, put it, well, I think that, you know, it's, right now it's not allowed. We're talking about allowing it and we're, so it's yes, no, but I think like a yes, but is totally within the scope of what we're talking about. So I think, I mean, assuming that's where the group wants to go. Mr. Zarbus.
Thank you. Jeff, I, I absolutely think that was a great place to start and I'm grateful for you leaving us there because how can we move forward without that critical foundation? The problem I have with it is that I think you're right, but I don't think, I think there's a difference between having the ability to discuss it to add in these other components and whether it's right or wrong to do it based on the fact that it would be calling out one business over another. I absolutely was not moved and remain unmoved by the fact that this particular industry is something that happens to be hot right now. And as was said in the last meeting, other industries could be hot later. I really think an even bar has to be applied. And while I think that it's imperative to know that we could discuss such things, personally, I don't think it's appropriate to do so.
So Jim, oh, and one sec, I just want to respond because I was thinking about this when I was watching the meeting. I mean, I think that part of what we do with all these zoning bylaws is call out different uses, right? And everything. If you look at the table of uses for the highway business, it's, it's all distinguished based on what your actual use is. So I, I don't know that there's like a, a huge concern from that sense. I mean, we treat car washes different from drive-throughs and retail stores. I mean, from my perspective, most of the big structures that we're talking about in the city are already not allowed in highway business. Like most of the industrial manufacturing stuff isn't allowed there at all. Retail stores already have a cap on fifty thousand. And most of the other uses that are, are allowed there in that zone are just naturally, we don't have to legislate no fifty thousand square foot fast food restaurant because it doesn't exist in the world, right? Like most of the stuff. So the only areas where we've really had that come up, I mean, we have the co-op which came in and that's, I think, a little under twenty five thousand. You could imagine a huge grocery store which would be allowed. But I can't think of anything else. And it, so it's sort of like already legislated out by the very fact that we don't allow those uses in that zone or it's a retail store which is capped. So I personally don't have as big of a qualm with that sort of argument. I think that this is also an industry that is like, it's flashing right now from zero to sixty. And I think part, I mean, I think when we dealt with the big box store thing several years ago, the big concern was about sort of leaving these buildings empty. And, you know, there's been a problem across the country with, you know, empty big box stores during the last recession and that they're difficult to use. So I mean, for me personally, I mean, I don't have a problem with the number of square feet in smaller buildings, you know. I may not want a sixty thousand square foot building, but four fifteen thousand square feet buildings is totally different in my mind. Because they're more easily reused if that building is gone or the uses change. But I think there's such a likelihood in this industry especially that everything is expanding right now. And I think it's probably going to contract into smaller, fewer hands based on the way it's going. And I think that it's very likely that things will consolidate in different places. So I just feel like there's a huge risk that whatever gets built there or anywhere in the highway business for this kind of an industry would be an empty building for a long time. Hold on, Owen was next, I think.
I was actually trying to figure out how to kind of verbalize. So I'm thinking, I mean, I, I think I agree with both of you. I, 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 I agree with Jim that we need to be really careful and, and, and sensitive about how specifically we're kind of drilling down to this one industry. And you're right, there are limitations as to what we can and can't currently do in highway business. And I think as long as we come up with regulations that apply broadly to all kind of similar types of potential uses that might already be allowed, like greenhouses and maybe other kinds of either storage or manufacturing facilities that may or may not be allowed there and have to look at the tail of uses. You know, I think we have precedent already in terms of a fifty thousand square foot limit for retail. And, and I appreciate what you're saying about speculating on potential future uses. So it is something to talk about. I think something I'm frustrated about, this will be the last time I say it, is that I get what Jeff is saying, but I feel like we had an opportunity then in our committee to talk about not only the, the questions at hand, which was basically yes or no, with a few kind of caveats for cultivation in highway business. But we could have then sat down and talked about things like the remaining items of the potential zoning ordinance, like maximum square footage or setbacks or appearance. And that just never came up. And we, we could have brought that to you for a more vigorous and potentially a more streamlined discussion. So that, that's just me for the, more me for the record saying that, that if that was part of the intended discussion, I wish we had had it.
I think Brenda, did you have your hand up there?
Yes, thanks. So these past few weeks, what I've been trying to get my head around was what's the highway business district definition? And so thanks Jeff for forwarding those materials. So the thing I keep coming back to is the cultivation portion of this business. I don't see how I could, you know, say that it meets the definition of why the highway business district was created, which was, you know, to recognize its uniqueness as a, a high traffic area. And, you know, the cultivation portion of this business, which is the majority of, of the lot size, it, it's not going to generate this type of traffic, neither car traffic, pedestrian, bike traffic. So I keep coming back around to the fact that I'm only being asked to decide, you know, on, on ten, ten, ten or whatever, I, you know, I can't get into roses and things like that. But I'm assuming it's the same thing. I just don't think the cultivation portion of this business meets the standard of why the high, highway business district was created, which is to make it really easily accessible to a lot of people, whether it's walking, taking the PVTA. You know, so I, I just keep coming back to that, that the retail portion is only five thousand feet, square feet. So, you know, I, I just, I just keep stopping there is I just don't think it, it, it meets that. And I also read the twenty thirteen highway business district recommendation report. And it's clear there's a vision for that district that's, you know, very traffic friendly, pedestrian friendly, bike friendly, meaning a lot of people want to get to a specific business. And this is basically a, a big warehouse. Maybe it will employ five to ten full-time equivalents. Maybe, you know, I just, again, I just don't think the cultivation part meets that standard of the definition for the highway business system.
Tom, did you have your hand up?
I did, although I think, think somebody else did before me, but I'll go if no one's objecting.
Take your time.
Great. So just, Brenda, that's a really interesting point and I, I'll need a second to process that before I can respond to it. But what I just wanted to say is, you know, I've been thinking, because I, I was making a little bit of a ruckus about this last time. And I think the point that I really want to make is like, right now we're discussing cannabis zoning. If there are elements of design that are really just more related to what kind of buildings we'd like to see in that district. And by the way, I'm fairly, I, I don't really feel like I know much about how to properly zone like a kind of auto oriented, like stretch of district. But like, if you, i- if there's things that we decide that they're really more about what kind of buildings we want rather than what kind of, like, what, what kind of things we can do to mitigate the specific impact of the cannabis industry? If we wouldn't want a building of any type to have the, let's say we're talking big ugly prefab buildings. Like if that's what we decide that we don't want big ugly prefab buildings, then I just think like, right now we're talking about cannabis and there's obviously like a person, like an, an organization that would like to open a building like that there. So maybe we need to act quickly. But I do think that if that's the way that, that this discussion goes, both the council and the planning board should give some really serious thought to circling back once this is over and amending the zoning overall for the area to include those same features. Unless there's some reason why we can justify them as being really specific to the cannabis industry. So I just think, I, I'm not trying to hold things up necessarily. I'm not trying, but, but like, I just think when we're talking about this, like, are we putting this in this zoning right now because that's what's before us and we don't have before us a district wide thing? Or are we putting it before us because this actually is something that we only care about when it comes to businesses that are growing or selling cannabis? And that's just something that I'm just hoping we can keep in mind.
Yeah, and I think you made that point in the last meeting. I thought it was well articulated, like it's, you know, I think there's two, and I tend to agree with you. I, I tend to like the cap size. I think that we've done that for retail. I think I'm interested in it for this situation only because it's sort of is a little bit in between the gap of industrial buildings, which aren't really allowed there and retail, which we've capped. And so I think if, if I was, you know, king of East Hampton, like I would impose that sort of a ban on all buildings. But so then the options right now are, do we do that for cannabis and then start a process for the other buildings? Or do we slow down this whole process here and delay a project that's sort of in the pipeline, which probably doesn't make much sense? And so I, I think, I mean, that personally, like speaks to me. I think, I think that process makes sense. I think that, I, I don't think there was a lot of discussion last week about sort of the uniqueness of the cannabis industry in, in connection with other things, other than the fact that it's an industry that has sort of come up since we last addressed cap size. And it may be a business that wants to build buildings that are that large. And that's really the only way it's kind of worked itself onto our agenda. Jeff, did you have something? And then you, James?
I'll defer to James real quick and then I, I do have something to add, but I'll defer to James because I would like to dig something up first and then try to share a screen.
You're muted, bud.
Yeah, that's smart. It actually popped up a message saying you are muted. It's like you fool, you're talking and you're muted. Okay. So Brenda, I, I found your points really salient and they really touched home. The opening remarks that are in our master plan and, and surrounding our definition of highway business really do define it as auto-friendly, as you described. And trying to fit this kind of business into that is really hard. I struggle with that as well. So what I did to kind of solve that in my own mind was to look at precedence. And I'm not saying you have to do this or agree. This is just me. I'm often an outlier. But I started with agriculture. It actually began with residential, but that didn't make much sense. So as I'm moving down through the table of uses, which we all have in front of us, because Jeff was still kind to share. I went to agriculture and there it was, over five square acres. It's by right that you could have a grow. So right now you, you can do a grow in the highway business. It's there. It's something that the zoning allows that was thought about, that they approved. This is the kind of business we want. A grow like this and prefab fifty K allowed by right.
Yeah. So the interesting thing about that, Jeff mentioned it last time. So the act, there's an agricultural exemption, like we're not really allowed to restrict towns aren't on agriculture. It's allowed by right, basically statewide. And so most towns have this sort of permissive use in their bylaws. And when the legislature started this whole cannabis process, some people made the determination and enough people voted for it to carve out cannabis from agriculture, which even though the universal laws tell us that growing cannabis is agriculture, like it's not capital A agriculture in Massachusetts, which leads to some really strange interpretations like this. It, it is a very weird reading. I want to let Jeff go first and I'll go back to you, James.
Well, thank you. I mean, I guess it's important because we started this with cannabis and I think that, that note has been well identified that, you know, this, this notion of are we trying to regulate cannabis differently than other uses? And I, I, I guess I would just politely ask to, to try to skip past agriculture for a minute in the table of uses. Because I think, I think that's getting us to a place, it's getting to one place. But I think we need to go all the way through the table of uses to kind of try to make sure that we're exploring the whole realm, the whole spectrum of, you know, opportunity that the highway business would, would, would give. So, you know, I think the thing that I'm, I am wanting to articulate is that in some ways, having no actual design standards for cannabis is actually going to make it easier for cannabis cultivation than anything else. And I don't want to overemphasize it, but I want to just articulate something, which is if you're going down Route ten, leaving East Hampton on the left, before River Valley Co-op are three buildings that were built in, let's say, the past six years, seven years. It's a kind of a mixed use development. There's, and the planning board actually reviewed it. So there are commercial spaces on the first floor of each of the buildings and residential above. So the why I think it's important to just articulate is that, I'm going to try, I did this last time. I really apologize. I, I'd like to share my screen for the document that was provided today. I apologize because I realize it was just provided today. But in the table of uses, it starts off with agricultural uses. There's some residential and then there is this thing called a planned business development. And the part that I wanted to really just read was eight, eight point one two, which is a general description. So it's a development constructed on a lot, um, under single or consolidated ownership. Plan developed, operated, maintained as a single entity containing one or more structures to accommodate retail services, service uses. It, it established that has to be three acres in size and is subject to the retail cap. What I wanted to articulate was that if you were applying, if you were applying for a planned business development in the highway business, you'd be subjected to a lot of criteria, a lot of things. I will not belabor this because a lot of them are parking oriented. A lot of them are reviewing traffic, which we get some of that in the cannabis regulations. It talks about access, talks about public water. You know, it talks a lot about parking. I'm just kind of breezing through. There's screening or landscaping. Street frontages shall include shade trees, you know, every thirty feet. There's interior parking lot requirements. There's a traffic impact statement. I get, I get to my point here in a second. So, you know, this does contemplate kind of one building for these, but if you had multiple buildings, it would be a special permit from the planning board. And so to me, what we're talking about is a, a use that could come in almost with no guidance or regulations attached to it. And in some ways, I'm going to try to stop sharing my screen for a moment. In some ways, we're trying to catch up some design standards to, to cannabis. And it's really important for us to go back to what the discussion was in twenty eighteen. There was a reason why this got put off. Kind of, we, we definitely punted collectively as a community, we punted on this because we didn't have enough time to really come up with what this would look like. The industry was really at its early stages at that point. So that's just one example of uses that are subjected to actually rigorous criteria. And currently we have none that would fit for cannabis buildings coming into the highway business. And, and we intentionally did that. We delayed this decision until now. To, to, to make one additional point and then I'll yield is just that large. So in the packet I did, I, I highlighted agricultural as a definition in the zoning and then manufacturing as the other definition, just because we've talked about both of those. You know, manufacturing by its definition is, is just currently not currently allowed in the highway business. So, so we're trying to accommodate cannabis on one hand, but make sure that the city is protected enough that we have a couple of documents that talk about something related to the character of the highway business is important. And as of right now, we feel, I, you know, I feel as your city planner, you know, I feel we are a little bit vulnerable. Especially with regard to building size, that if, if we don't consider the size of these buildings, we, we, we don't know what we could get. And there is no cap on, on what could come forward in the highway business. And it doesn't appear to me to match what we already have for regulations in the highway business. So, so I'm just trying to balance this idea that we're not singling out cannabis. We're actually looking at that cannabis could come in on an easier path. And they, we, we, we don't like, so cannabis cultivation would be its own definition. It would be its own use. So we can't just put cannabis in that planned business development category. It doesn't go there. So cannabis has no perceived design requirements, whereas the three buildings that was David Boyle's property went through this rigorous standard. And so we're just trying to balance these. So I'm seeing it as kind of the opposite from, from some of you that I don't think we're applying something specific to cannabis that doesn't apply. I think we're actually trying to catch up some guidance on, on what, what cannabis might look like in the highway business.
I just have a question. So I, I'm a little confused now. So are you looking for all of us to participate in a conversation that will drive, you know, new design requirements specifically for cannabis cultivators?
I think it's, we're in this discussion phase of trying to decide whether or not we want to allow cannabis cultivation in new buildings. And then, yes, Brenda, that's, that's, that's where we get is, is what, if any, design criteria would we want to establish?
If the answer is yes. If, if the answer is no, it's, okay, okay. So just then for the sake of conversation, because we, I feel like we keep going back and forth between a yes or no on ten, ten, or this larger discussion about design development requirements is, do you think it would be helpful if we first talked about a yes or no on ten, ten? Not to vote on it, but if there's consensus that it's a yes, then we could move forward in talking about the design requirements, because I'm, I'm not there with a yes yet. So I would hate to move fast forward to talking about design elements. So I'm just thinking about how to get my arms around this, this conversation because it's a big one.
Yeah, I think you're right, Brenda. At some point we're going to have to get there. I have a list right now. I have Salem, James, and then Tom. So let's hear what they have to say.
Okay, I guess I'll go since I haven't said anything yet. But um, a couple of things. You know, right now cannabis cultivation is allowed in highway business. It's just not necessarily allowed in a new building. So, you know, I mean, it's kind of a, it, that's the real kind of question. Do we want to allow someone to be able to put up a building to, to grow cannabis? And, and I think that, I mean, we also have, there's a couple, I think, important things we haven't talked about yet that I think need to be injected into this conversation, which is if somebody is going to invest in the production of cannabis in the highway business zone, there's a reason for it. The market's going to drive their investment. That, the, the property in that zone is not cheap. They're not going to, they're not going to waste, they're not going to throw good money to, in, you know, to do something that is irresponsible. They're, they're going to put money into something that is potentially going to have a, a, a use that is going to drive people to that property. I mean, there's no other reason why you would spend that much money to, to invest in that. So there's that. And then also, we also, you know, as an entire community, as a, as a, as a city and a state and a country, we need to be thinking about sustainability and we need to think, be thinking about the, the use of fossil fuels and the, the three thousand mile Caesar salad. And why would we be putting up hurdles for, you know, a business to be able to produce the product on site and not have to ship it and use fossil fuels to get that product to other places and encourage that type of, you know, honestly wasteful and, and short sighted type of development? We want to be able to have businesses that can produce the product that they're going to sell on site. I think that just makes a lot of sense. You know, and I, and I think Jeff, then I'll end because I said a lot. How, how hard would it be to put cannabis cultivation in planned, the planned business development model? So if someone wanted to make a new building to grow cannabis and they were going to have a retail store, that, that would then subject them to the desired standards of a planned business development?
On this, just on their last point, because I think that's what you had asked me a question. I think I believe that it could be an option that it within ten point ten, I don't know. Would this might take a little thought and exploration, but if, if cannabis cultivation in new buildings was determined to, you could, you, I, I believe it's within the scope, is that you could make it comply with the requirements of eight point one. You know, and that would be what, I mean, I, I believe that that would be possible because that's, it's, I don't know. And I looked to Jesse, Jesse has some, you know, you know, Jesse has a lot of experience in this kind of thing, but that's one, that's one option.
Okay. I don't think there's any problem with that legally on notice Salem. I think that like we could do that as part of this.
Okay. Yeah, because one of the things I thought that was interesting about that is, you know, not only does it subject them to parking standards, but it does subject them to the tree requirement, which I think is kind of important. And, and when it butts up against residential zones, they, they literally have to put a, an evergreen fence. between that, and, and so that would kind of address, you know, another topic that we have on our agenda around setbacks. Or we had on our agenda, but you know, so it, but it is, it is just, you know, kind of interesting to think about. Because as I read it, I was like, all of these kind of make sense as it relates to this particular industry, so.
Thanks, James, you're next, James. You're still muted.
I don't want to push this point too hard, there's a few different things I want to say, so I'll wait till later. But there's just one point that I think is imperative for me to get across. And it's very difficult because, and we kind of fundamentally agree on this, there's sort of a political divide. We should do more to regulate and, or we should do less. And I'm definitely on one side of that. But for me, there's just one piece of this, and it's, it's no individual here. I think it's just, it's a higher level disconnect. And Jeff, you pointed out as the state doing it, saying that they don't see it as agriculture. How anyone could look at growing a plant cultivation and say that it's not agriculture? I think there's a reality check that needs to happen there. This is clearly agriculture across the board, all the rest is politics. That's what I have to say.
All right, Tom, you've been very patient, then Owen after you.
Thanks. So there was something that Brenda said that I, that really got me thinking. And then Salem said something that also got me kind of thinking. Where, you know, I, there was a moment where I was thinking that really we need to, like, like I personally, like, you know, this is right, it's legally, we're considering this manufacturing, I guess. And as a rule, manufacturing isn't allowed in the highway business district. Now, for what it's worth, I'll just get it out there, I don't care if there's manufacturing in the highway business district. If this property was being bought by somebody who wanted to open up like a small factory and, 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 you know, hire, you know, some, some, create some good jobs in East Hampton, like, I don't personally have a problem with that. I don't personally think that's any more destructive to the landscape than fast food restaurants. So like, that's just where I personally am. But the other thing is, my understanding is that currently in the highway business district, there's a business opening up that will be cultivating cannabis, right? Like there, that, the, the property just a little bit up the street, there's going to be a retail, but also cultivation. So to some extent to me, I feel like that ship has sailed. Like if we wanted to say that, that this sort of activity is not something that we'd want to see in, in the highway business district, that's something that we probably should have, you guys and us on the council should have collectively figured out back when we did the zoning, because it's already happening. And now saying, you know, oh, that in some way this is bad, like it's, it's, it's gonna be happening. There, there's investment already in this sort of thing. You know, so right, so this really is just related to whether people should be able to do it in new buildings, or whether if they want to do it, they should have to buy an existing building and repurpose it, which is what the folks over at, oh my God, I'm blanking on the name, you know the one I'm talking about. They
Liberty.
Liberty, yeah, I mean, that's what they did, right? So this is already, you know, for, for all, I, I don't really know where the status of that project is. But for all I know, since they've got their signage up, they might already be cultivating. You know, getting ready for, for opening. So in terms of what we like, in terms of the zoning, I actually really am kind of interested in, in Salem's idea, because I think Jeff makes a great point that, you know, other developments that have to be in the, you know, that they want to be in this district have zoning already set up. And that's really my only qualm here is, I just want to make sure that we're being consistent. You know, if there are already like requirements about parking and design standards and trees and whatever that other buildings are held to, then absolutely, let's also held, potential, if one wants to put up a new cannabis building, let's hold them to those standards. I think that makes tons of sense. The only, the only area where this would cross into an area of sort of discomfort for me is if we're talking about holding them to standards that nobody else has held to.
Owen?
Yeah, I think I just want to echo basically, well, first of all, I want to thank Salem, because I think somehow we went down into a very, I think with, with well-intended and good input, we went down to this rabbit hole about if we can't even do this, and I appreciate Salem reining the conversation back in, because the reason we got here in the first place is that this is allowed, but can we do it in new businesses? And then I, so then, I knew buildings, I'm sorry. So then I defer back to what Tom was just saying that, well, I mean, pretty much any other industry that's allowed in highway business can erect a new building, so why can't this one? And I think that based on what we've seen in regards to economic development, job opportunities in the city, you know, inside, I think employs like a hundred people. And, and then, and so, well, there's, there's, there's definitely great opportunities there. I mean, they have the potential to employ more employees than some of the surrounding businesses in the highway business district. I think Salem also, thank you, makes a really great point of a way to marry zoning with reducing our carbon footprint and sustainability in that, in, in regards to looking at zoning and, 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 and attracting businesses to the city that are ultimately going to consolidate the work that they do into one place, you don't have all this, all these carbon emissions. So I know I'm just kind of echoing what my fellow committee members are saying, but I agree with it. And Jim, yes, I agree, it's all agricultural. Whether it's one has more leaves than the other, I don't see the difference. So I'd love to get kind of back onto the initial question as to can we, can they build new buildings or not? And if, if you want to talk about constraints on, on footprint, I think that's, I, I do agree with Jeff, I'll defer to that. You've worn me down, and I think you've made some good points that, you know, if we already have a fifty thousand square foot limited place, maybe that's where we should start. And then we have all these other just general regulations in terms of abutment with other zones. So I, I think a lot of this is in place for us, we just have to kind of, you know, we just have to start really talking specifics now.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, Owen, I think some of it makes me think about what Tom was saying earlier about maybe some of these topics make us rethink some of the other rules in the district where, you know, Salem's point about manufacturing on site, or you know, I, I was thinking a little bit about what Jeff was saying about giving a leg up to cannabis, where it's kind of funny that right now you could open a business, if I wanted to start making gummy bears, I can't in the highway business, but if I put cannabis in it, all of a sudden I can. So there may be some like inconsistency there, right? Where it's, I mean, there's no manufacturing that's allowed by, by permit or otherwise, unless you put cannabis in your product, and then it would be. So it may be something Tom said, like maybe we deal with the cannabis part and then have to dig a little deeper and rethink the whole district. Jim?
There we go. I had a question about, when we were putting together the initial ten section on cannabis way back, we knew that the CCC was going to be issuing regulations and we're very mindful about the fact that everything we did might be overwritten. This is something I think that's interesting here in that, and it's a very small piece. But there, there's a talk, as Jeff, you mentioned some discussion about there's kind of like no regulation, or this is unregulated. Isn't it true that the CCC is likely going to have some, and issue some regulation on this? And I'm asking, I'm not making a statement, I'm genuinely curious as to whether or not they will have some regulation that will come out around cultivation?
Yeah, they have some. You know, they created a tiered system. So, so my basic understanding of it is that for a cultivator, you have to look, you, 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 you determine the size of your operation and then you determine which tier you're going to fit in. My understanding is that they did cap cultivation, so, so like a single cultivator. My, my last, the last time I looked, the single cultivator was capped at a one hundred thousand square feet of canopy. But I, I think that, a couple of quick things is that I don't think that necessarily correlates to building size. And my, my, my understanding of the way, they did establish some energy efficiency standards. They have, you know, standards for pesticides and things of that, 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 those parts of how things are cultivated. But I would say the way that I would respond to that is, everything else, they just basically gave to local municipalities to work out the details. And so that's, that's kind of where we are looking at our highway business district and kind of just trying to figure out what's going to fit and what's not going to fit. I don't think that they have any, they have no caps on building size, they have no setback requirements, they have no like design standards that, that like a planning board would do. They, they basically punted all that to the local municipality to, to work out in their zoning. So, so there are like some other regulatory structure is going to be there through the Cannabis Control Commission, but none of the local, like, local impacts or local character kind of things are gonna, they're all going to get shifted to the local municipality.
Brenda?
I have a question, so help me get my head around this. Jesse, you just said something about the gummy bear comment. So let's say this is a pickle business, a local pickle business, and it's the exact same plan that we're looking at. So it's a greenhouse for pickles, five thousand square feet for canning, manufacturing, pickling, and five thousand for retail. Would we be having this conversation? Would it be allowed?
And the way I look at the table of uses, I think that the cultivation would be and the retail would be, but I don't think they could put a manufacturing facility there. But I, but I think based on what we've talked about tonight, I think maybe some of us at least have second thoughts about whether that's how it should be.
Okay, thank you.
So Brenda, I think your point a few minutes ago was actually a good one. I, I do want to, I know Chris and Harry, you guys haven't said anything, I don't know if you want to or need to, but I just want to give you a chance if you do. Chris, you got something?
When you're done, sure, keep going.
Well, so I, I, I want you to talk now, but what I do want to say is I just want to, afterwards, I want to see if there is a critical mass to sort of move forward on a yes, but kind of discussion, as Brenda said, you know, if everyone here is comfortable with that, or at least the majority, then it's probably worth it to sort of start talking about that. But I, I want to hear from you and/or Harry, if you, and actually Austin too, if you got anything that you didn't get to say. So why don't we do Chris and Austin and here, if you want to, you can too. Chris?
So I think, thank everybody for this discussion, it's been enlightening. I've been listening to everybody and everyone's got great points. I've changed my mind like three times already so far. So the one thing I wanted to kind of say was, I think that in my mind, this is manufacturing, I don't think this is agricultural. I think it's a product that's being, that's being packaged and distributed. And, but I feel like that's not a big deal to me, like we talked about. I don't think it's like Thomas, I don't, I don't really, I don't really mind that it would be in, in highway business. But I, I would want to talk about restrictions on building size, building qualities, so that, to go back to my point from the last meeting, if it had to be repurposed, it would be able to be repurposed. I have concerns, I don't really think about the, I think the carbon footprint or the talk about, you know, that the energy side of things is kind of irrelevant to me, because if you're building a fifty thousand square foot building, it's going to need to be temperature controlled and all of that. All of that comes from fossil fuels, you know, it comes from electric power plants that are fossil, that are powered by natural gas, or it comes from propane tanks. You're not going to be putting, you know, wind farms behind it to power this HVAC system. So I think that, you know, cultivation areas for cannabis take a lot of resources. But I'm okay with that too, if it creates a lot of jobs. I think that putting it in new building or, or an existing building, to me, I completely agree. I think that ship has sailed, whether or not we would allow it in new business, because we have already, we've already allowed cannabis in, in the highway business area, we've allowed for growing in that area. I think it's just a matter now of, should we allow it in new buildings? I personally have no problem with that, I just would want to make sure we put restrictions around it. So it could be reused when the cannabis industry levels out.
Thanks, Chris. Austin?
Yeah, I think for this industry, we should be looking at the benefits of a planned building development. All those tools in our toolbox, I think are, should be used.
Thanks, Austin. Harry, anything to chime in with, or you just listening? You gotta unmute yourself if you're gonna talk, I can't even tell if your lips are moving.
I can't say anything wrong with this whole thing. I, I think what we passed originally with that, with that major supermarket would have been, you know, a lot more environmentally unfriendly and everything else, and to put a billing on there, I just can't say anything wrong with it.
Yeah, I do think we want to try to avoid thinking about this as one application, right? We usually talk about this and we haven't done it yet. When we're looking, I mean, we're looking at a change to a bylaw that affects at least a few parcels in the zone. And so I think it's sort of a little bit, it, it, it goes down the wrong path to think about this proposal on this parcel, because I think we're trying to craft a universal rule. So it's, it's probably better to be thinking big picture and sort of more broad philosophies. But I, I think it's a fair point that, you know, is this as proposed more disruptive than putting a stoppage shop there? I think you can make an argument that it's not.
Jesse, can I ask Jeff a quick question?
Yeah.
Jim, can I jump in front of you real quick? Okay. So, you know, I'm trying, I've been scouring my brain to think of different buildings that could potentially be of a large nature similar to this, and that could potentially go in highway business. And I'm just curious, right now, do we allow recreational facilities in highway business? So a good example would be, I don't know if anybody's ever seen Indoor Action up in Greenfield. It's a big bubble building, it's a giant, it's like a field that has a white bubble over it. And then, you know, there's Indoor Action, or no, not Indoor Action, what's all for?
Yeah, North Hampton.
Yeah, like the indoor soccer place, I mean, it's a huge metal building with, you know, indoor fields or courts or, and I'm just curious, you know, is that something that's allowed right now in, in highway business?
Right, so you had mentioned that last time. The quick answer, so I just changed my screen, hold on. You know, it depends on the model, right? So if you are, oh, I've been there before too, the place in Westfield. Roots, yeah, roots, right. So, so if you just, we don't have to call it roots, but that, that, that idea is a for-profit business, it's an entity that is not there just out of the goodness of their heart, you know, their business. And so that would not be, it would not be allowed, whereas a nonprofit recreational facility would be. So the trick, uh, maybe, I don't know if the why would fit there either. Right, it's quasi, so I think the, the point about what Jesse was saying earlier about agriculture, or, you know, a church is another good example, that they're, they're protected uses. You know, chapter forty eight, section three sets up a, a whole bunch of uses that you really, except in certain ways, you can, you can sometimes look at time, place, and manner, like you can do a little bit of site planning kind of regulations, but you can't, you can't prohibit a church anywhere. And you can't prohibit like true agriculture, and I understand the debate, but like as of right now, the state legislature had determined that cannabis cultivation is not agriculture. So we can't, we can't, we can, you guys, you should petition the legislature to change that. But for the time being, it's not an option. So this goes to, I hope this isn't going to belabor it, but this is why they think the table of uses is important. So the highlighted section at the top starts with the use prohibited, which is just a dash. The P is permitted by rights, so those are those protected uses. So the first couple uses are residential, which we're not really going to talk about, because yes, you could do multifamily. But you can't even do, so I guess my screen's in my way, you can't do a single family house in the highway business, it was, it was kind of determined to not be a suitable place. I'm belaboring this, but as you get into the community facilities, so this is where you were asking Salem, so church, religious, educational facility. So those, so if there was a university that wanted to locate here, or some kind of school, those are protected uses. Public park or conservation area. And then you were kind of, I was thinking like this nonprofit recreational facility or a country or golf club. So like a golf club is not allowed, even though that's what's there now. I just want to go down to the bottom, I, I think I can weave this together if you bear with me for a moment. So we have another section that I've looked at before for other things, so we're in, on the left, we're in the retail and service. So all of these uses are what would So all of these uses are what would kind of get fall under that planned business development. So I, I think that that's worth talking about at some point before the end of the meeting. Let's see if I can get here. We have all kinds of industrial or wholesale. I, I apologize, I did not practice this, but there is, there is a category for, outdoor recreation.
Ah, it's number forty, forty, under retail and service.
Thank you.
And golf courses, miniature golf driving range, they are allowed.
Okay, so, okay, that's perfect. So um, right. I guess Salem, sorry, to your point, so you'd be looking at number forty, indoor amusement and recreation service. Actually falls as an SP, which is a special permit from the ZBA. So that changes the use category. Alright, so, so I guess you're right. Um, that could happen.
Okay.
That was a very long way to get to that, but.
That was really the only, you know, other, other than like a, you know, a Costco or BJ's or something, you know, like a, a huge building like that.
Yeah.
That could potentially be similar to what we're talking about. I, I just feel like it's important for us to, you know, have all those pieces on the table which potentially could be allowed there.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. That's good. I have something else to say about the idea of the planned business development, but maybe, I think what I heard Jesse suggesting, Brenda had her hand up, maybe we talk about this yes, but question first and see, see where we are with that. Or Brenda had her hand up.
Yeah, I saw Brenda and Tom both had their hands up, but I think before, I mean, and I want you both to talk, but is there anybody who's strongly opposed, who's, who's a big fan of no? We're, we're not okay with building a new building, but we are okay with them continuing in operation in this highway business district?
My only issue,
Brenda?
I'm on the fence only in terms of, I don't know what my obligation is in terms of interpreting, highway business district definitions. You know, the zoning, the zoning map. So I, I would be yes, but if, maybe we need to, you know, re, rethink section eight point nine, what the highway business district is. Or, you know, right now, planned business development is forty-four under retail and service, whereas cannabis cultivation is under wholesale transportation and industrial, you know, further down the, down the line. So clearly, the original thinking was that, they didn't belong together. And now it's fleshing out. It's becoming a reality. So I would be yes with a lot of, thinking about where this fits and do we need to amend the table five one? Do we need to change section eight point nine? Do we need to amend section eight point one? I think that's the depth we're gonna have to go to, to get our heads around this for the long term. Because I, I love the idea of manufacturing. It's just, it's not allowed in, in the highway business district. I can't do anything about that.
Well, it's, in general, manufacturing isn't, but it is if it's cannabis manufacturing, and that's already in our zoning bylaws. So that is,
in existing buildings. And there was a reason for that, because it serves the best interest of East Hampton, to repurpose existing buildings. I mean, I don't see those two things as the same thing, but I'm not opposed to it. I'm not opposed to it. It's just, I think a lot of work needs to happen. There's not going to be a quick fix with a quick vote. I, I just think now the reality has come about and we have a lot more to work with, that I think we can come up with something that really works for East Hampton.
Yeah, and I think just to flesh that out, I think that it sort of might fall into what Tom has talked about, which is this might be a two-step process, right? That we sort of look at what's before us, which is how do we want cannabis to integrate into the highway business if it's a new building? And then the second step is, okay, like this process made us all think about a lot of other things and maybe we need, you know, either the planning board or the city council to start the ball rolling on a little more of a global highway business revision. Alright, so I think it is worth it to move on to the yes, but concept, acknowledging that some people that are not a no might be just a pure yes, but at least we can talk about that qualification. So I saw Tom and Owen in there, in that order.
Yeah, I'm, I'm all for the yes, but I mean, I just, I will continue to nag that like, there's probably a secondary conversation that needs to come out of all of this and, I do feel a little bit out of my depths just because I don't know if I have a, like, if I'm, fully understand and am on board with the vision of the highway business district in general. So, there's, that's like a challenge that I have in, in, in legislating here. But um, with that being said, you know, I, I just skimmed this uh, you know, the, the planned development section. And like, I'm looking at that, I'm looking at, the language that we have for retail in general, capping it at fifty thousand feet. And I'm wondering if we, without creating any radical new language, could just say, yes, this would be allowed new build, in new buildings, but the buildings have to conform to the standards of, any other planned development in the highway business district. And they also have to be like any other building, you know, under a certain square footage. And in doing so, we're, the thing that I have personally been uncomfortable with, that is creating rules for, certain buildings but not others based on what's going on inside the buildings. We can bypass that by just holding them to the same rules that we hold other new developments in the district. That's sort of like, and I understand there's probably little points there where, maybe the highway, maybe the planned development zoning doesn't cover like a specific cannabis, like a cannabis specific thing, that someone's concerned about or whatever. So we can work around the margins then, but like, does that sound like a good jumping off point at least?
I mean, I personally think it makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I do too.
I do. Okay, I think I got Owen and then James.
Yeah, well, so firstly, I want to say Brenda, thank you, because you've brought up all these great points that I just didn't think of at all, going into this in terms of really drilling down into the definition, the intention, of the highway business, both vis a vis how we look at it through ordinance and how we look at it in terms of a, it's a space within a community. So, I feel like I need to really go back and really pick through that, that part of the zoning ordinance. So thank you. Um, and then I basically disagree with everything Tom said. I think that's the simplest way to address this. I think that there is clearly, a lot more work ahead of both of these committees in regards to a lot of the, the really reasonable points that, that Brenda brought up. Um, and a lot of the other things that have been brought up here in terms of really looking across the board, at uh, at, at building regulations in general. But I agree with Tom, yes to new buildings. You know, we already have basically an established cap on size. Um, and there's probably again, as I think it was mentioned, uh, by Salem earlier, there's already some regulations in, in terms of how you handle a budding onto residential. So, yeah, I think, I think that's the smartest and easiest way to, to deal with this. But then I think we have to go back and really look at what we need to do next.
James? Salem, I got you after James.
Yeah, thank you.
Still muted.
Saying I'm gonna do a kumbaya moment here Salem. So I, I just, I'll throw only one point and skip my whole really cool kumbaya thing I had prepped, for Tom and Owen's statements, which I'm completely in agree with. The only thing I think you should add is, Councilor Kozinski's seventy-five foot buffer into the conform to all the other stuff. Because I think it makes sense with regard to the view. Um, and then I pass it to Salem.
Okay, so um, well, if we look at the, the um, planned business development, there's, I, it ends up, I think, I believe it's thirty-five foot buffer with, has to be um, uh, evergreen shrubs every three feet. So it ends up being like a significant wall. But I mean, we can get to that a little bit later, because I think, I mean, I think that when I was reading that earlier, that was my idea. I was like, it, it makes a lot of sense to, if we're gonna do this, I, I feel like any property that, or any business that went into that property would probably be a development. It would be multiple things going on, um, regardless of what industry it was. But I think one of the things that, and, and I hope I'm not throwing a, you know, a total curve ball here, but I think one of the things that we do, have some culpability for is looking at that particular spot is a view shed. And you know, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, but I think the maximum building height is forty-five feet there. And so that might be something that we also take into consideration just because, you know, and that's, that's tough when we're looking at all of highway business. And, and, and when, obviously we're not going to the spot zone, but you know, I wonder what, and maybe Jeff, you can help me, like, are there tools to protect, certain view sheds that don't relate to spot zoning? Because I feel like all of us in this Zoom room appreciate that particular view. You know, even though we're not legislating that particular spot, you know, I think it's important to at least acknowledge.
Yeah, I mean, I, I appreciate that, and I think it actually hearkens back to, some of the earliest discussions about if we're gonna apply a standard to one thing and not the other. So you're gonna get a little bit, I think we gain quite a bit, but uh, through the idea of, putting cannabis cultivation in the planned business development section, I think we gain a lot of consistency. But I think maybe that becomes the, a to-do list item. Because then you might be talking about cannabis or, you know, and, and I think that's where we, that's where we do have a scope issue, right? So I think we could take cannabis cultivation and put it in the planned business development, right? But if we start changing all the components of planned business development, then we're, then we're amending a different section. So I think,
Right.
We, we do, I, I, I appreciate this discussion a lot because um, I, I really like when I didn't, I didn't see this before, in, in bringing this forward. I didn't see how this could work. But to me, it gets to, I would say like ninety percent of the issues that have previously been raised about consistency across uses, to try to plug it in, um, plug cannabis cultivation in. Um, it just makes it universal that, because we, we, we never know what will happen, right? So no one can guarantee that cannabis cultivation will happen at Tasty Top. Something will, you know, eventually, and if it's a planned business development, then we, not, nothing got lost, right? So we, we really did a good job of kind of fitting it in. What I would offer maybe as one additional thought or opportunity is, we do have another meeting set up in two weeks, so the twenty-eighth. It's the same group. We're gonna be talking about the downtown business amendment, but there might be an opportunity to, continue this one, potentially one additional time and um, really just take section eight point one, unto itself and really kind of like plug cannabis cultivation in there and just really think about how it would work. You know, I, I do want to do that kind of ground truth thing to make sure that, there's not something in there that would be really problematic, which I don't think there would be because it would be the consistency measure, but, I think that that could be an exercise for all of us to kind of take a fresh look at eight point one and cannabis going in and just look at that. To me, it accomplishes several things. So it, it, it just inherently gets the cap, same cap as retail. And it comes up with a lot of the other standards that we, we don't really have, you know, in place for cannabis right now. So that would be one opportunity to do, to, to take one other, other step is to look at eight point one, with specific respect to cannabis cultivation.
Thanks, Jeff. Uh, okay, Tom was next and then Brenda.
I, I, I think that that's a decent idea, but I, I just, you know, to the extent that it fits everyone else, just because this is our second meeting on this, and I'd like to see it, you know, move uh, forward. I think like, we, we should, we should keep working on this until we have the best idea that we can of being on the same page, so that we're not, you know, like I know there's, there's still maybe some gaps here, so that, I, I just think we should keep going until, like, if there's things that Jeff wants to go back and look over about eight point one, that makes sense. But let, let's get as far along as we can on this, because I, you know, the, these are obviously, these meetings require a lot of people's time. So there's that. Um, I, I have a question and I, I'm aware this is a possibility of it being a stupid question. So I'm just gonna flag that right now so that I don't look like a dummy if, if I'm right, and it is. But, you know, when we're talking about the, the view shed and things like that, like all cannabis establishments, require a, okay, so this is where it might be dumb. They, they, I know all cannabis establishments require a special permit from the planning board. And so part of that, isn't, isn't part of that, that, so let's just talk about this property, but any other that had like a really valuable view shed and somebody wanted to develop it, and it goes before the planning board. Isn't that like specifically the place where you might address those like really site-specific concerns?
It, it can be, Tom. I mean, part of the problem that we deal with from a zoning perspective, right, is that, we want bylaws to be really clear to applicants mostly, but so everybody knows this will be allowed, this won't. And so, usually when we draft these things, we try to remove as much discretion as possible. Like you wouldn't want this bylaw to say like, you know, a cannabis establishment can be approved as long as everyone on the planning board thinks it's a good idea, right? Because it doesn't give you any forethought. And so if you think of it from an applicant and you're like, alright, I've got all my ducks in a row for a multimillion dollar application and construction, but there's this question about view and I have no idea what's gonna happen when I go in front of those five or six people and like pitch this. So it's usually better to try to get those things out there. You know, there's, there, we, we get some things in the, in the bylaws where we have a give and take. So you know, we've been dealing with a lot of solar projects lately. And there's waivers that the solar projects usually want as far as a fifty-foot buffer, where they're not allowed to touch anything in the fifty feet. And so we can sort of use that and we currently are and we have in the past where you say, okay, if you're gonna want to go into that buffer, we'll give you the waiver, but you know, we really want to make sure that you replant some of those trees, or you give the city an easement so we can connect our rail trail and that kind of thing. But it's hard on a view shed to say, we think this parcel is really beautiful and it's kind of iconic in, in East Hampton. And so, we're gonna give the planning board discretion to kind of require that it be lower than a building that would be on the other side of the street, maybe that doesn't face towards Mount Tom.
I get that, but I mean, just sorry to jump back and,
No, no, yeah.
Sorry, complete my point. Like if I'm thinking of, you know, out of the new like non-INSA cannabis establishments, that have like, have a physical presence in, in town now, I know that they're like, the Cottage Street location, there was concerns about foot traffic and queuing. And the Northampton Street location, there was concerns about proximity to a daycare, right? And in both of those cases, the applicants were like, okay, well, how about if we do these things? So, you know, I, I, I'm just wondering like, is, is that, you know, I, I completely understand that it would be a shame if someone like did all of this and then it's like, oh, well, it turns out this property's pretty and Gussie didn't think about that. But I just uh,
It is hard because that one is aesthetics, right? So it becomes a little more of a, as we call, like I think proximity to the daycare or like foot traffic, those are sort of practical, issues. I mean, design standards in general can be hard, where you sort of look at concrete things like, how tall is this building? Not things like, does it look good? I mean, even the things where like, does it fit in with the neighborhood? Those are horrible for us when we have to evaluate those cases, like, who defines the character of the neighborhood? Like, that's really, really hard.
Yeah, and a couple of them that you mentioned as examples are, you know, can often be mitigated. So like, if there is an impact, it can be mitigated by doing X, Y, and Z. I think the problem that, we will encounter, I believe that we, we may encounter this with whatever goes there. So I don't think it's gonna be cannabis. It could be another, you know, stop and shop, we're still there. Whatever it is, you know, I, I, the fear that I have kind of in, in thinking about views is, to, to people that it's really important. The only thing to mitigate the impact is to not have it developed. So, you know, we're, we're in a very sensitive area with, with view sheds. So, so like, I, I think it's subjective. We have an open space and recreation plan and to my, to best of my knowledge, that view is not in the open space plan, and that's where it should be. If, and you know, like when we come down one forty-one, the bottom of Hoy Oak Street, you know, some people love that view looking over to the left, right by Hendrick Street. But you know what? If something gets developed there, there are, we have no tools really to say that it can't be developed, in, until it's identified as an area important to protect. So it's, it's one of the most challenging things I think we'll encounter, going forward with any project at the site, um, is whether the developer can do anything to mitigate, you know, an impact on the view. You know, the applicants, there, there was a, a community outreach meeting for this project and it did come up. So that, you know, there, there is an awareness that the view is important to some people, but the, the suggestion to put, all the cultivation underground, you know, is not going to be financially feasible. And I think it will put the city in jeopardy, you know, of a lawsuit if, if we're not. So I don't know, it's, it's an important subject, but I think it's a really tricky thing to regulate.
Is it, hey, is it okay if I jump in here real quick? Now, in the past, we, you know, I remember like years and years ago, we did something called TDR, Transfer Development Rights, and we had overlay zones. Is, and, and I mean, maybe this is something that like oceanfront or lakefront places have. Is, and and I mean, maybe this is something that like oceanfront or lakefront places have, is there such a thing as a view shed overlay zone? Where you say that within this overlay zone, buildings have to be one story, and it can't be forty-five feet, that's a maximum of fifteen feet or something.
Yeah, that can be done. It takes a lot of effort because you have to have the community. Input and support as to what views are critical, so. You know, my my basic understanding is that there's been a lot of discussion about this on East Street. But still today, East Street is not protected from like the view shed is important to East Hampton, but. For the the, there was a steep slopes ordinance that got discussed many, many years ago. And I think that was what it was getting at, is trying to protect that, and so it is something that could could be done. But I don't think it fits within the discussion that we're having here, right, on this parcel, but it could be a future.
It does, it does sound like it is a is a discussion that maybe for, since we do have view sheds in East Hampton, is a future. Potentially important one, and I'll tell you, that's deep slopes one, that's like a little bit of trauma you brought back to me there. I haven't, I haven't been yelled at in in a city council setting like I had in that one. That was rough. That was really rough, so. Thanks for that.
Alright, I got Brenda and then James.
Yeah, Jeff, I had a question getting back to you were saying, you know, maybe you wanted. To review section eight point one.
Yep.
Are you thinking of moving the cannabis, you know, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven? From wholesale up into. Retail where the planned business development is?
Yeah, I think that was part of what I would wanna do as an exercise. I think there are some mechanics, so I think you're you're picking up a good thing. I think, yes. I think there might need to be. Some. Different sections that get tweaked to make that happen, but I don't know the scope of that at the moment.
So for next steps, are you thinking? Are are you gonna draft something for us, or can we form a working group? I have no idea how this works.
I mean. The mechanics that you mentioned was really good in terms of the table of uses. That's often the exercise I'm willing to to do that is just see. By by implementing the concept of moving cannabis cultivation and product manufacturing into that section, what else happens? But to me, there the the thing that is of value. In trying it is if I can, and I know we're belaboring this, but. I think it's important to just set the stage. If we have a continued meeting next on the twenty-eighth. I think it gives us an opportunity to kind of just explore this. What's really important to mention at the moment is. In compiling the sections that kind of relate to highway business. I'm looking at my notes, it's eight point one five three. So the the thing that's most useful, in my opinion, at the moment. Is that by considering this, so if you look at eight point one five three. It says the proposed development must comply with commercial development and environmental performance standards of section ten point five and ten point two, so it automatically. Relates to other sections, and I had highlighted, at least I did, for the ten point five. So I, because I didn't realize this in compiling the materials, that. I was looking at ten point five and trying to figure out how do we get some of these criteria? You know, to to relate to cannabis, and by pulling it over to the planned business development, you you then have. The ability to look at ten point five one two, which is the appearance and architectural design standards. So again, just like you would have the authority on the three buildings next to River Valley Co-op. You know, you would have that same kind of broad discretion on a cannabis development, and I think that's pretty meaningful. It provides us with the consistency that we were talking about and some ability to contemplate some of those things. So, you know, I I guess I would look to this group to figure out if. With with it with it kind of that focus, I think I could pull. Up, pull together a much more concise, I mean, I just sent forty-five pages before of the whole zoning ordinance, basically. I think we, I think we could narrow this down and and assess. So before there's a final decision, just assess whether this would accomplish. You know, any of the goals that we talked about.
I just have another question. So, but if you go to section eight point nine, the highway business development section. It also speaks to some design elements, landscaping, density, dimensional requirements. And then it refers back to section six. Are section six and eight point one and ten, whatever? In compliance, or are there any conflicts among them?
I can almost guarantee you there's some contradictions in those, just based on how the East Hampton zoning ordinance looks.
So i- i- in that event, then would we write specific language? Pertaining to the cannabis establishments to get around that, so we don't have to like try to change. Section six and section eight point nine, section eight point one and.
I mean, I would think that that's like a more globe, that that's, I mean, first of all, that means you you've finally become a planning board member since you've realized that what we really needed. Next two years rewriting all of the zoning ordinances in East Hampton.
Yeah, right.
We've put out the biggest fires in the last five years where it says like ten feet and then has twelve in parentheses, but. The problem is we need like an outside expert to help with that, and that requires money. So I I also think that to Tom's point about sort of like efficiency of time. You know, I think if we're talking about lumping this in, we can literally modify the section that we're tasked with amending tonight. By saying, you know, that it's that that these establishments are allowed in a new structure in the highway business, provided it complies with. You know, the planned development ordinance and is, you know, these structures are all considered part of the retail cap size section as well, and then. It sort of adopts those by reference instead of trying to shoehorn them in.
Yeah, okay.
But then I I do think all of those sections probably need to be looked at. As part of, you know, phase two, three, four, five, whatever, but I I don't wanna slow down this project with that. Especially because I think there's someone waiting in the wings ready to go, so like. I don't wanna be rushed, but I also wanna make sure that we're. If we can just get the low hanging fruit on that, it probably makes sense. James?
I think that is spot on, Brenda, and you're you're really getting to the heart of the matter. Jeff, I'm wondering, and you kind of said you were gonna put some of this together, I'm wondering if you can help us get some pieces of those sections. So that at our next meeting, we can really review those and talk about them and kind of look at them. And I I agree, Jesse, we're not looking to reinvent the wheel, but it it'd just be a good idea for us to know. If we're saying, as long as it complies with this and this. It it's good, I think, for us to know that we're not like tripping any obvious, like, what were they thinking? We don't wanna be those kinds of planning board members. So so Jeff, if you if it's possible, you could kind of, and. I'm not, I I'd like to give you some direction on like where to where to pull these from, but I think you already know. And I just wanted to say one more thing to Tom, and I think Jesse and Jeff both did a really good. Job of responding to the an excellent question about like, is it really necessary for us to have a lot of language? You know, legislating this essentially, because the planning board can make decisions. And generally, we're going to make decisions that are to the benefit of the community, and that's our job. If you look at section twelve point seven nine, you'll discover the the item B. And I'll read that really quickly. Jesse reads these constantly, he's much better at it than me, but it says. Protection of city amenities and abutting properties through the minimization of any detrimental or offensive uses or destruction of unique or important natural scenic. Or historic features of the site. That's really our one play that has any teeth. That we can use to make modification, but it's so nebulous. Always is the threat of a lawsuit. If we do something that's different than other people, they can sue and say, your decision won't count, plus it's a pain in the ass for us. Excuse me for using that language, but. The the thing about it is, is what we've been doing is using diplomacy and camaraderie and the. The relationship between the neighbors and the developers. To to not have to really even push that. But just make it, everything is gonna go better and and work with, frankly, I had to say, very reasonable developers. So that we can, you know, get them to agree to avoiding things that are gonna make the neighbors go up in arms, and that's been very effective for this board. So so in general, I'd say that, you know. Without teeth, we've been very effective, but it's always much better for us to to have teeth, because one of these days, we're gonna get a developer that isn't gonna be that friendly. That's all I have to say.
Alright, we seem to have exhausted ourselves, so. I I guess the question, though, is, I mean, Tom, I I think you were right about trying to get as much information to Jeff as we can, I think. It it's tended to work well for us as a board where we sort of. Throw everything against the wall and make our feelings sort of generally known, and then Jeff pulls together literal writing. I mean, I think. I think what we're talking about now, at least for further discussion, is incorporating the the design, the planned business design and the retail cap. To apply to cannabis businesses in the highway business, and then. If we, if Jeff puts together specific language and maybe gets those sections flagged for us to look at before the next meeting, then. If we have specific things or if someone, I mean, I think there may be other things that we flagged for further discussion, I mean, maybe fifty thousand is too big for all of our building cap size, I mean. I was shocked at how big a fifty thousand square foot building is, and. I mean, I think those twenty-five thousand square foot buildings we have in in town are huge, but. Those are probably like secondary, tertiary, whatever, but does that make sense to the group as a whole that we we continue now and Jeff gets us some stuff before the next one? Does it not make sense to anybody? Excellent.
Can we send our thoughts to Jeff? And if we do, do we copy everybody, or no? That's against the meeting.
We specifically can't, so share your thoughts next time we're all together on the twenty-eighth, but Jeff is. Jeff, I mean, we know the sections, right? So even if Jeff doesn't get them to us quickly, we've got that business development section and the retail cap size. So I think generally speaking, we're talking about. How to incorporate those, or if there's anything different we need to do besides just incorporating the whole, you know, if there's piecemeal stuff.
Yeah, that's the important, that's the important thing, you know, and I. I know it's almost seven thirty, but I guess, you know, to to Brenda, you know. Is there something? That you feel now that you it would, because if if there was a little bit that you, if you had a thought or question now. And we we air it a little bit, then, you know, that helps me in assessing things. More efficiently for the twenty eighth, so like, if there's something that you were thinking about that is a question still. You you already raised a really good point, so there's the mechanics of taking things out of the table of uses. You know, and that's that's doable. The the beauty I see here, at least initially, is that. The building cap size is already in the planned business development, so so we actually don't really need to do a lot of. Massaging to get that in there, it's already there, so.
Well, except Jeff, I I do think, I mean, that that cap size section defines what a retail business is, and I think what we're talking about here is expanding that definition, so I think we need to. Either amend that retail cap size, or at least specify very clearly that even though we know it's not defined as that, it has to meet the standards.
Okay, and so I I generated a question for me, so. You know, we did advertise. This discussion as as amending ten point ten, right? So. Through this joint meeting, if we do. We can take cannabis cultivation and put it into eight point one, but if if we need to change eight point one. Here's my question is. Can we, so so there is another legal advertisement that happened, so when when this goes to city council. We can legally advertise that we are gonna amend section ten point ten and eight point one. And if if we need to. Do section six or something, we can show that we're amending all of these to allow cultivation in the highway business in new buildings, Jesse, I I guess I'm asking.
I think that gets, I think that gets slippery. I think back to Owen's point, I mean, if you think about notice, if someone else is gonna get impacted besides the cannabis business. They don't know that yet, and I would not really wanna expand that midstream. I think the thing is, is if we're not gonna modify those standards that are already in there, if we're just gonna adopt them. It makes it clean and easy, and we can just adopt them by reference, but if we're gonna say, oh, we don't like section, you know, C four. Then we sort of have to incorporate everything separately and restate it, except C four kind of thing, so. I think that's only wrinkle, but I don't, I wouldn't expand our scope for this project, I think that's. I think Tom Peak has taken that on for the next two years, he's gonna deal with all the issues that arose in this meeting.
Well, I think it's very helpful, and and just to air this thought, which is that if you take, so so Brenda's point about the use table. The the way I'm thinking about this is if we have cannabis cultivation. And cannabis product manufacturer. And we take those uses and move them to retail services. You know, that then makes eight point one work, because it says that eight point one applies to all retail services categories in the zoning, so. So that's kind of, there's, there's a lot of these mechanics, and it's like a puzzle, so I just wanna have the the two weeks to put the puzzle back together. I I believe it can be done, but to to not shut off Brenda, if if there's anything else that. You know, you've seen or had as questions, it's helpful if you air it. Maybe as this group, if you're comfortable, but.
I exhausted myself and all of you. I'm anticipating, because I'm really gonna get into the details of all this stuff, I'm anticipating I'm gonna have. A lot more questions, so I'll just write them down and ask in two weeks.
Perfect.
Or you may answer them all.
James, I saw your hand.
I mostly was gonna say everything you said, Jesse, and you did such a great job. I just add this to 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 Jeff. With regard to, you know, the possibility that it may get too deep. And I hope it doesn't, as Jesse said, I don't think we're there yet. We have another, I think next meeting is when we get there, so I think we have a little time to figure that out.
Alright, should we just continue then?
What's the date that you wanna continue?
July twenty-eighth.
Alright, so I motioned to continue the public hearing to amend section ten point ten. To allow cannabis cultivation, manufacturing, research and development in new buildings in the highway business zoning district to July twenty-eighth at six P M. I can do.
Chris, was that a second? Alright, I I liked James's strategy from last meeting of going based on how the faces are stacked on my screen instead of remembering alphabetical order, so I'm gonna go. All in favor, who say aye? Mr. Zarvis?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Harry?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
And I am an aye.
I would take a similar motion.
But motion to continue this public hearing regarding the amendments to. Zoning cannabis holding cultivation, Highway Business District. To our scheduled meeting on the July twenty-eighth.
Okay, do I have a second? Alright, I, all those in favor, Tom Peak?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Aye.
And I as well, so we're good.
Alright, now the cumbersome motion to adjourn, can I get one from the board?
To adjourn. Seconded.
Alright, Mr. Zarvis?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Harry?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, ordinance committee.
Second.
Okay, Tom Peak?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Aye.
Aye, we're good.
Folks, this was really fun. I like talking about zoning stuff with you guys, thanks.
You guys are great.
Very informative.
We'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Stay safe, everybody.
Thanks.
Bye-bye.